I'd like to call to order the work session for March 2nd, 2020, and we are not all here. So, we'll announce when the two council people arrive, is that fine? Or are we not able to attend that start?
No, you're fine, you just have noted it, so that's fine for the work session.
If I forget it, would you announce if they're here for the public? Thanks. We have one item on the agenda tonight. I would like to remind council once again that staff will be pausing intermittently to answer any questions. So we'll go right to the number one. The staff will present the findings on the assessment conducted to seek direction on the future of Goodyear's community funding program. So we have the deputy city manager, Winnet, and Reed, and we have Christina. I'm not even going to go to the other side. I decided that earlier. Okay, you're on.
Panatescu.
Panatescu.
Oh.
It's like Madonna.
I've been studying for two weeks.
I should have asked you.
She says it's like Madonna, just Christina. That's all we need.
Just like it's spelled.
Yeah, just like it's spelled. So, I would also like to introduce Kathleen Carlson. She's the Director of Community Strategies from Pinnacle Prevention.
Very bad echo. Yeah. I'm still glad you're saying an echo because it's usually me with my hearing aids. It is so echoey that you're talking like this and can't hear you.
You can't hear me? Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, better.
Okay.
I know that's a nuisance to have to do that.
That's okay.
Let's see, we have just till 2022, and then I'll be gone.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Tonight, we will be presenting the results of the 2019 community assessment and seek council direction on recommendations contained within that assessment. But first, I thought it would be good to start with a little background on our current program and review other ways the city supports nonprofit organizations outside of the community funding program. Although the city of Goodyear does not provide any direct human or social services, our investment in nonprofit organizations that serve Goodyear residents provides valuable resources for our residents. The ongoing base budget for community funding is $114,400. This year, you approved a one-time supplemental of $25,600, of which $10,000 was allocated to fund the assessment, and $15,600 was added to bring the community funding disbursement to $130,000. The city's $130,000 investment served 23 organizations that in turn served over 7,400 residents within the first six months of this fiscal year. In addition to our community funding program, the city supports other nonprofit organizations with direct contributions. For example, organizations such as the White Tanks Conservancy, Avondale Resource and Senior Centers, and the YMCA receive direct funding. The city also sponsors events such as the Goodyear Music Festival and the Ballet Under the Stars. In the upcoming fiscal year 21 budget process, we are requesting council consideration to sponsor the Mavericks Annual Food Truck Roundup in the amount of $50,000. That's just a little information on our current state, and now I'd like to transition to the results of the community assessment. The city issued a request for qualifications to firms to conduct this assessment. Pinnacle Prevention was selected out of five respondents. Pinnacle was a successful candidate because they are an Arizona-based nonprofit organization dedicated to growing healthy families and communities. They have been successfully operating since 2014, and they have experience working with multiple government entities, including Maricopa, Navajo, Apache, Hila, and Mojave Counties, and the Arizona Department of Health Services. In addition, they have experience working with healthy community frameworks with a strong relationship with vitalists. So now I'd like to turn it over to Kathleen Carlson, again, the Director of Community Strategies from Pinnacle Prevention, to explain the methodology they used to prepare the assessment.
Thank you, Winnet. This assessment used a framework based on the vitalist elements of a healthy community. These elements were brought together by vitalists and a group of community partners as part of the Year of Healthy Communities in 2017, and continues to provide a thoughtful basis for building communities across Arizona. We used a community-based research approach that allows both scientific data in the form of community indicators and community input in the form of focus groups and key informant interviews to inform the findings and recommendations. Community indicators were chosen based on being available at the city level, relatively easy to understand, and readily accessible from a recent and trustworthy data source. Eight focus groups were completed with 48 people across four different groups of Goodyear community members: English speakers, Spanish speakers, youth, and nonprofit organizations serving or hoping to serve Goodyear. Nonprofit focus group participants were recruited from a list of all the nonprofits currently serving the city and a list of those who applied to serve but were not funded. Community member groups were recruited through Facebook ads targeted to Goodyear residents, in-person recruitment through flyers specifically asking for Goodyear residents at our focus group sites, and personal recommendations for Goodyear resident participants who were contacted directly. The only exception to this was the youth focus group, which was completed with a class of high school students at a Goodyear high school. Twelve key informants were recruited from a cross-sector group of community leaders. Community input brings a wealth of information to a community assessment along with those measurable data, which is the indicators. Where the community input brings the personal experiences and perceptions from a broad range of community members, indicator data bring a more objective picture of specific aspects of the community. Themes from focus groups and interviews were assessed alongside community indicators to identify these key findings and inform recommendations. So I'll turn it back to Winnet to present the findings, and I will be here to answer any questions if needed.
Thank you. So the methodology of using vitalist elements of a healthy community corresponds nicely with council's strategic plan goals, as you see there on the right side of the screen, and correlates with the guiding strategies in our voter-approved general plan. You all have been provided a copy of the full assessment, but I'd like to provide some highlights of that assessment. On the positive side, key informant and focus group conversations revealed a strong sense of community safety. Access to parks and open space are important assets in the community, and there's a lot of excitement around the upcoming recreation campus. And key informants identified supportive elected officials and city leaders as a strength in the community. When it comes to concerns and opportunities, both focus group and key informant stakeholders identified a lack of transportation options in the community, also social justice, such as efforts to address issues adversely affecting socially disadvantaged groups, and a general lack of diversity were identified as key concerns. There was an opportunity for improvement identified when it comes to access to specialty healthcare services, specifically behavioral and mental healthcare. And key informants identified a lack of affordable housing as a concern. This information provides us with a snapshot baseline that we can monitor for trends that may show emerging vulnerability or strengths in our community. After careful review of the study components, Pinnacle researchers identified five priority elements where we and others can make the most impact. These elements could be considered for future grant-making opportunities. The first element, community spaces, targets creating opportunities for children and youth and supporting growing local culture. This element also promotes the importance of design choices for individuals of all abilities. The recreation campus is again another great example of that. When expanding the variety and options of available services, we are encouraged to consider addressing needs on a regional level. Community services are services with a focus on minority populations, people in crisis, and the homeless. As for mental health care, we are encouraged to identify solutions to bring more mental health care services to Goodyear with an initial focus on supporting efforts in schools linking students to available care. And finally, investing in innovative transportation solutions with an initial focus on supporting residents who have challenges with transportation to meet their healthcare needs. Here you see the five priorities charted using estimated relative impact and effort of the city to the city or others. You'll see that while all are expected to have a high impact, the priorities to the left are anticipated to require less effort on the part of the city than the items on the right side requiring much more input from the city. So before I move on to best practices and benchmarking, I'll stop here and see if there's any questions or comments regarding the assessment so far, and if I can't answer them, I have two very knowledgeable individuals sitting next to me. Any questions or comments on the assessment?
Councilwoman Pazillo?
On the regional solutions, where were you doing some of that, correct? Give me some examples of our regional solutions, and give me an example of community spaces. What does that entail?
Sure. So in terms of regional solutions, one of the first examples that pops to my head is your work with the Avondale Resource Center and how the Avondale Resource Center is supported in order to be able to offer senior center services to residents of Goodyear. So that's one example that pops to my head right away and could be a great framework if you decide to pursue that recommendation in the future.
Right. That's what I'm saying. I'm asking, give me some examples of that, because I know we're already doing some of those, and isn't there some food banks and some other things that we're doing there?
Yes, yes. Exactly. Yeah, food banks as well is another good example. And then in terms of community spaces, the big one actually is the REC campus that's coming already. So you already have that in the ball rolling, which is why we put it on the lowest effort, and people really, really value that community space within the city. Some of the things that came up that were seen as opportunities were really around bringing people together in these community spaces that you either already have, like the large parks that you already utilize to a great extent, but bringing people together in those spaces. And then as the new REC campus becomes developed, there is so much excitement, and every single focus group we did, that came up. People really were excited about it. The youth focus group, they talked a lot about they would love to have space that was dedicated for youth, and I think that that will probably naturally already come out in that REC campus, but it's something to consider as the planning and details get worked out.
Okay, thank you.
I think there's so much excitement about the REC campus because parks matter. I did have a question about the survey results, I think as we're going through. As I went through it, and I'm in the booklet, so under the summary of key findings and recommendations, there's a dozen or so.
Tell the pages.
Well, I would say page two, but they're not numbered. Oh, I'm sorry, it is. Page two. My finger was on the corner. But then you go to page three, under Concerns and Opportunities, and I noticed that we called out lack of social justice, which I know you're going to talk about in a minute, and lack of access to specialty healthcare services. Those two things seem to be contradicted by what's listed on the front. Is there... Did I misread that?
You did not. So that's an excellent point. Thank you. So this list of elements of a healthy community pull out those community indicators that are the more objective scientific data indicators piece. And then the second part is the community strengths and opportunities are what really floated to the surface in terms of themes when we were analyzing the community input. And so there are times where those appear to contradict, where when you do your community satisfaction survey, community members who are responding to that survey are very happy with something, and then when we're in a focus group and it's a different group of people, and they're talking about something very specific, like in particular, the access to care was really around mental health care for youth, children, and young people, is what really floated to the surface around that. So that's why those appear to contradict, but they're very different types of data, where one is quite objective and the other is really based on people's community perceptions and their experiences within the community, which may be different from the specific question asked in that survey.
And I think, for me, in reading through the opening pieces of this, you know, you're always influenced by your immediate surroundings. So I just finished some work in South Carolina in a community that was really struggling with social diversity, and then to see that we have, you know, this concern or opportunity for the lack of social justice, and that was somewhat disturbing because I didn't feel we necessarily had that. So, do you have anything that you can kind of expound on with that?
Absolutely. As you see in the indicators, there's not very many clear ways to measure social justice because it is subjective in the way people experience it as well. So really, our only indicator that we were able to get at a city level was around the Gini Income Inequality Index, which is not, it's a very small piece of what that social justice big umbrella looks like, that the whole country, communities across the country are tackling this right now. It's a very common thing that's coming up, and people in communities across the country are really talking about it. It came up in the focus groups, and again, that's coming from people's perceptions and their specific experiences, where they just wanted to see more representation across the whole city in terms of things, like it came up talking about when they see Goodyear advertising things and showing pictures of the REC campus and things like that. Just the opportunity there is, I feel to start would be, you know, looking at ways to incorporate more diversity in terms of age, in terms of language, race, and ethnicity, all the different kinds of things that can come together to make a really diverse group. In promotional materials and advertising and community outreach, that kind of thing is a really one way to start that conversation, and it came up a lot in our youth focus group as well, where the youth were talking about feeling like there was a lot of stereotypes against them, and they didn't feel like they were part of the community in the way that they maybe wanted to be. So that was actually probably the biggest time it came up in the focus groups.
Interesting. Thank you for the details.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sherri, you had a question?
First of all, I apologize for being late. I got stuck in the transportation section. And that is one thing, I've got like kind of like three areas to ask you about. The transportation, we have talked about and are starting a way to get people to appointments through like Uber and that type of stuff, was that brought up to the focus groups or?
That came up in the key informant interviews. It did not come up in the focus groups, and so that's an interesting opportunity to maybe advertise that program and the availability more widely, so that... Advertise is not the correct word. I'm sorry, I'm trying to think of the right word, but just making sure that that's promoted more and that the community is aware of it is a great opportunity there. But yes, transportation is tricky for everybody across the whole valley.
Yeah, it is tricky, especially because it's so regionally funded that we're sometimes on the short end of the stick.
Exactly, which is why it was way high on the effort on the matrix there, because we recognize that that is not an easy, it's not one of the low-hanging fruit, absolutely.
The other one was the affordable housing, which I think also ties into my social justice question. I was a little fuzzy on that one as well, but let's start with the affordable housing. With the affordable housing, what, a little more detail of what they were looking for? Because I know our housing prices are really high, the apartments, as we come online, are we looking at Section 8 housing that's being requested, or is it just the housing prices?
That came up really as more, and you'll notice it didn't really come out in our actual recommended priorities because it didn't really float all the way to the surface across the indicators as well as the community input. But where it came up was a concern, and it seemed to always be addressed in a manner that was, you know, we recognize the city's growing really fast, and it's a challenge, and it's a big struggle, and so a lot of it was a concern for looking down the road where there would be opportunities. Would housings continue to be affordable? It seems like housing prices are going up across the whole valley right now, and so is there anything happening to kind of prevent concerns in the future? So it was identified as a key by key informants as well. It didn't really come up in the focus groups as much, so it wasn't a perception so much amongst community members, but it came up with our key informants, which are community leaders, which may have a more, you know, further ahead view of what's coming down the pipe as the city just grows.
And then the other issue, it really piggybacks from what Bill said. The social justice just seemed a little fuzzy to me. I do criminal defense, so what I think of social justice is different than, I think, it's such a broad umbrella that I think if we need to figure out who's not being heard, we need to maybe drill down in that area a little bit better to see what specific populations and what specific concerns, because I think that's just so, you know... For me, that's just such a wide umbrella that I think people use that now as a clicky buzzword when they don't like any policy or anything, it's not just. And I'm really not sure how the city can work with income levels, since other than our employees, we don't set income levels. So I'm really not quite sure what our role is that, except for maybe to learn more about what our citizens want.
I think that that's a perfect place to start. This is really a beginning, and this is the first time you all have done an assessment like this, and so these assessments, we often find, raise a lot of questions in areas that really deserve a deeper dive, and I think you bring up an excellent point. And there's a lot of different components under that umbrella of social justice, and income is one of them. The Justice Department and all of that is part of that as well, and then some of those other community perceptions and feelings of not being felt or heard is part of that too. So diving down into what that really looks like could be a really wonderful way to move forward on that issue, absolutely.
Thank you for all your hard work. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
Which one will us go for? Go ahead.
Thank you. On the social justice, I think that probably did catch all of our eyes, and if maybe I could offer an interaction that I had that might help explain, we're bringing in people from all over everywhere coming here, and they're coming with different life experiences and different backgrounds and experiences, even with police departments and governments. So there was an instance where one of the members of the West Valley and AACP came to a faith and community roundtable, and he said that that very thing, people are coming in and apprehensive about police and things like that. And so, I mean, that was communicated with our chiefs. I think there's been effort to try to make a connection, but it's definitely a basis for some good conversations and to keep that topic alive. But, you know, the reality is, even people if they've lived here may have had different experiences, and people who are moving here from other places may have different experiences too. One of my questions I have is about affordable housing. Just like the term smart cities, it means something different to every person, so I don't know if you have a good, solid definition that kind of helps us to understand what does that mean?
I don't have a clear definition from the people who raised the question in the key informant interviews. The vitalist wheel of healthy communities does define what they consider affordable housing, which is in... Affordable quality housing means... I just need to find the page, excuse me a minute. And again, this is an opportunity for the city to see what it means to you, because there are lots of different ways of defining that, and it could be a good stepping stone to move forward. But vitalist defines affordable quality housing in a community as something that leads, in a community, leads to higher economic stability, improved mental and physical health, and improved air quality. Affordable, high-quality, socially-integrated, non-discriminatory housing located near public transit, avoids displacement as neighborhoods are revitalized, and is designed to encourage social interaction. And so that also kind of is dependent on where you are. So these definitions are really designed to help work within Goodyear or within whatever community they're being utilized. these definitions are really designed to help work within Goodyear or within whatever community they're being utilized. So they aren't a very direct roadmap because they're intended to be flexible for different kinds of communities across Arizona. So I'm sorry, I'm sure that's not a satisfactory answer that you were hoping for. But really this is an opportunity for, I think, Goodyear to really define what that looks like for Goodyear moving forward.
Okay. Thank you. I think, I think that's, that and many other topics or discussions worth having and continuously. I just wanted to make a comment that Westmark has a quality of life subcommittee and they also use this vitalist wheel. And so it's helpful that we are looking at it on a local scale and then also on a regional. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Brandon?
Yes, thank you. I apologize. I was, I was late as well. But yeah, this is, I think you're full of hard work putting it all together and now dive deep, diving into the data. So I appreciate that. Yeah. The affordable housing, that was interesting. Something that's very, I, when I was with United Way, they had a very specific, like almost a dollar amount that they would tie to affordable housing, like the median income of Arizona and someone who's working and has childcare and things like that. There's actually a dollar amount, but it's interesting. There's no actual dollar amount. What they were actually thinking is more of a, more of a community type feel to it or where it's located and how it's accessed and the community feel. So, but then the mental health, I'm not sure if we already talked about that. Were they talking about places you can go to get mental health? I'd be curious if that was more of the youth, like student counselors and, and yeah, different things like that with, that's more of a bigger thing. It feels like it's not, I know it's a big thing, but a lot of the youth have been talking more about it lately as well. And I know in that atmosphere, just at high schools and things like that, or gun violence or things of that nature. So I was just curious if that's where that was coming from or if there was something else or the lack of places that we have here that may be a component of it or, or what that looks like.
Yes, it absolutely was around youth and children was where it really floated to the surface as a theme through our focus groups. Our youth focus group talked about it a lot at the high school level. And then also in our other community focus groups spoke about it a lot in terms of not having somewhere locally to take children who have mental health care needs and talked about having to go down to Phoenix Children's Hospital to drive all that way. And they have to leave the community in order to access mental health care services for children. And I know in key informant interviews, there are some programs being tested out and tried to help bring in more mental health services to high schools. But that definitely came up in the youth focus group a lot around not having access, what it looks like, what it looks like within the school, in the community, and then the impact it can have when that access can't be reached.
Okay. Thank you for the clarity.
Yeah.
Wally? Okay. For the community spaces, I really think Goodyear has gone over and above and beyond any other city in making sure that the only gathering place we have, which is our gorgeous ballpark, is open to all of our residents throughout the year. And I honestly, Pete, do not know of any other way that we can add another event to an already full calendar. So I really feel that it really is my opinion that whoever was in this focus group really does not know the inner workings of this city. They do not know what we've done and they do not know what we're going to do because they're talking about things that we work on all the time. The regional solutions, we work regionally on every issue. And it all boils down to the transportation, which is going to be a problem for every community in Arizona and especially where we are because we don't have light rail. We do not have good bus service and we don't have any way to move our vulnerable population, although we are working on it because we just did a big grant or we just agreed with Valley Metro to include another service or another, we're going to study it again or something, but we are working on it. And on the community services, we don't have the community services here in our city, but we partner with outlying cities to give our residents all of those services and we pay for it. They pay for it with their taxes as well. So we're really working on that. And the mental health care, a lot of it depends on the insurance that they have, if they even have mental health coverage. I know of a few free clinics around that you can go to. They are not in Goodyear, although we do have Park Mountain Healthcare that's located in the next building from our city hall that does low income and no income and no coverage. And they'll take anyone in there and treat. So we do have that accessible, but I don't know that they have an extensive mental health program at all. And that's something that has to be addressed at the federal level and the state level. As a city, we can't just go and build a mental health hospital, although we would like to. And because we aren't in charge of education, we can't say, okay, we're going to put all these mental health counselors in all the schools because the school boards have to do that. So maybe we as a city just need to do a better job at educating our residents on what we do collectively for all of them. Because some of the things that they have come up with, I'm really surprised. And the young folks you were telling us about, we have a youth commission and that's how we're getting the kids ingrained into civic duty and to how we operate. And all of them have an opportunity to go on that youth council at all of the high schools if they're nine, 10, 11 or 12 graders. And they don't apply, but those that do really get to see the inner workings. And we know truthfully, our kids, our teenage kids are a forgotten group. We do lots for the seniors. We do lots for the babies. We have pre-care. We have after school care. And our teenagers do not really have a gathering place. And every one of them have told us. And that's what propelled us to build the recreation center. And I can assure all of them that Nathan and his group are going to take care of those specific needs. And it's just taken us a long time to get it, unfortunately. And, and we have to remember, we really are a young city. We're not, we don't have everything that Glendale has or Avondale has or Phoenix has. And I'm, I'm using this vitalist wheel and mag. And it does not really pertain a lot to my own city, but it pertains to all the others. And it's wonderful for all of the, they want community gardens. We have one, but we'd like to have more. So we're planning that. That's in our general plan. And I, I really, I'm interested in the assessment, but I'm very surprised at what they have said. The social justice, like everyone said, it means something to all of us differently. I'm very involved in race equity at the National League of Cities level. I do not see in my city what the other cities see as far as social injustice and racial inequality. I do know that our police are trained to respond, but every, it seems all over the country, there is this fear, and I'm going to use the word fear because I don't know what else to say, about our policemen. And if they're, whatever minority group they're from, I think they have been witness to other cities, what other actions happen. And they assume that it's going to happen here. It hasn't. And I hope it won't because our, our officers really are professional and they're trained. But I can understand when the NCAAAP came to the faith and saying, you know, we really kind of fear the officers. They don't know our Goodyear officers and they really don't know Goodyear because we're not that kind of a city. We are a loving, caring city that takes care of one another and we're going to continue to do so. And I appreciate your assessment. We're going to keep working on it and just do the very best. That's all we can do is the best we can do with the money that we have and to outreach to as many folks as we can. We know there's needs. We know there's folks that need food. We know that they need help with utilities. And we know that they perhaps even need better housing. And we help them when we can, or we definitely refer them to an agency that we interact with or that we have an IGA with that will help them because that's what they do best. And that's my soapbox. I love Goodyear and I really, I really feel that we're doing a great job with what we have. And look at the diversity of this council for heaven's sakes. We're not 10 or 15 year old people or 30 year old. I wish we were. I mean, we're all age groups. So we represent really all of the city. Some of us have babies. Some of us have grandbabies. And I think that's a huge diversity for us. But maybe you're right. Maybe in some of the advertisement, we need to, I, I don't pay attention to that stuff. I look at the ad and I just go on. I, that's just never, I don't look, I don't try to divide my city or my population or my community. You are a Goodyear resident. I don't care where you live or who you are or where you work or how much you make. You're one of our people. And I want to keep our community together and I don't ever want it divided. And I don't want us to start saying we have a racial problem or we have a social equity problem unless we really can identify it so we can do something about it. Cause like you say, everybody has a different idea. And Mayor, I'm sorry.
No, you go right ahead. I agree with many of your, many of your stating statements. I somewhat feel that. I feel much of this is national opinion from coming from all the cities. We have new locates all the time. Our companies bring them in. Some people are coming in from California because of the type of social services and they're used to getting, they're used to getting exactly what they want from social services in California. So they come here and now I want to be California. It doesn't work that way. I think we're fair. We've known all along that we lack in somebody, especially transportation. But if your committee come into a mag meeting or a TPC meeting and sit in the audience and listen to it, you need to do that. That needs to be a part of this opinion thing because it's totally different. It's totally different. It's cost. It's priorities. It's the location. It's so many things go into that. So, so that, that, that sort of makes me wonder about some of the answers you got and whom gave you the answers. Because some of the things you say, I have talked to people that wanted some of those departments in our city. And I've talked to them that we don't have it. We're very high income, first of all. Okay. And we're high home prices. And with the homeless, we've worked very hard on this. Would I like, would I like homeless housing? I've had experience with a couple in council about something that doesn't look very good. And the first thing they say, you're having homeless housing below a price in my city? So we got two entities on here. And so you're trying to bring them out, bring them together and find a solution. I think the ask is huge, huge. Do I see a, do I see a completion? No. I mean, it's so huge. So to me, it has to be segmented in some way to our city that is something we can achieve. Christina knows how I'm feeling about the homeless. And so, but whatever segment of population it is, they also have a responsibility. They have a responsibility to adhere to the laws for the police and the responsibility to try to, like street people, I understand the mental, I had, my grandmother had schizophrenia. So I'm telling you, I know the mental side of it. But we have a society too, that found another way to live. And so how do we, how do we separate that and give the people that really want, they really want to improve their life? So do we spend all our things on one type or do we make some rules? And so it's very frustrating for me that we have a society that somehow lost responsibility on their shoulders. And then we have some sad things like the downturn. Sad things where seniors left their home and other people lost their home. And then we're working against outside state development, outside ownership. Those are the people that come in and just take advantage of Arizona. So when we have a downturn or an emergency, we can't even find them. So there's a lot of segments that come into this. And, you know, bottom line, do we want people not to be homeless? Absolutely. Do we want transportation for them? Every year at mag and TPC and in this council, we talk about how we're going to get transportation. Just getting people to and from the doctors. It's not, we don't have a great program in Arizona. We don't have the money. And they're not giving us some of the choices that we need. It's very political. It's unfortunate that our state, our state runs on a political system because that's where we lose it many times. So we come up with a little good idea and we take it to the legislature and it gets dumped. Just to equalize that, we've had a lot of good things happen this year from the legislature. Okay. So I'm, I'm a go, 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 go. I just want you to know that, but in transportation in the past, transportation is like building a home. You just can't say, okay, tomorrow I'm going to have this. You build on each little thing. And so that's the difficulty of it. And I think until we get social services in our city and not a partnership with Avondale, are we going to see any movement? Because that's when we're really going to be facing the person that needs, the need person in our city with our opinions and with what we have financially to be able to support. So I thank you. I know it's, your job is a tough job. Okay. You've got both sides that are needy. But I have to tell you, so are people that have high incomes. Okay. So for a city, you wouldn't believe it when you see some of the requests, but in their own realm, they're needy. So you have to find that balance. And Christina does a good job for what we give her and what she has.
Absolutely.
So any other, oh, Bill?
So I think it's important for us to remember that these were the focus groups that brought the information forward. So we are, none of us can relate to them. None of us are racial, we're not a racially diverse council. So none of us know what it, what it's like to be African American or any one of the other minorities, Hispanic, et cetera. None of us know what that's like. None of us, even though we can remember what it was like to be a teenager, none of us are. And a teenager today is much different than the teenagers from everybody here. And I, and I'm looking at Wally because that's where you're sitting, but I know our teenage, our teenage years were much different.
I have a 16 year old granddaughter. I know how the community feels.
Right.
So. I have three great grandchildren, four great grandchildren. So, okay.
But, but we aren't that age. So when we talk about how, we ask them how they're feeling, we get that information. It, we've got, and we do a really good job of synthesizing that data and making good decisions. And if you look at what we've done from the rec campus and how excited everybody, that was what we all sat around here and said, that was our dream is that we were going to do that for the community and get everybody excited. So I think these are just additional inputs that we can use to make, make our future decisions and, and not, not focus so much on the, the, what can I get for nothing? Or what can you, what can you do for me, government? I think we'll use it to make wise decisions going forward. And I'm very confident in this council, future councils, because of what has been done in the past, the good decisions that were made. I think it's just something for us to consider as we go forward. Transportation, we know is, is a huge issue. Mental health care, we've all known. We've been talking about that for quite some time, that the mental health care challenges in, in the country are a problem. We aren't going to solve them in Goodyear. We're not going to solve them in the Southwest Valley. We're not going to solve them in the state of Arizona. But we shouldn't bury our heads to it either. And I don't think that we have. So I think these are really good inputs for us to go forward. Helps inform our decisions, which I think is part two of the community funding, which we got derailed from, but I haven't looked ahead in the presentation. But I think these are, these are really good points for us just to kind of consider and, and look at what we can and can't do, you know, in the future as we, as we go forward.
Well, that's a good synopsis of what we're thinking and what we're talking about. So I appreciate the opinion in council. Appreciate all of your opinions. Some of us come a little different side and some of us come, some, if you've been involved in it, in that department like you have before, I think that your understanding of it is different. I can tell you, my mother headed the social service, the senior citizens of Michigan. Okay. And so her, a lot of this was in this realm. And it was frustrating back then and it's frustrating now. And there are a segment of population that take advantage of it. And there's a segment that wouldn't think about asking for help. So now you're in the middle of that working it. So good job. And I agree with Bill. We're not going to throw this in the drawer. We will be discussing it and we have this study. And that will only help us when we come up against barriers to try to break those barriers down. barriers down. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now you're back on.
All right. Thank you very much for the comments and feedback. The next portion of this is benchmarking and best practices. In addition to the community assessment, council requested information into how other cities are funding their support to nonprofit organizations, and identify best practices in grant-making. Here, you will see comparisons of cities, to include the population in blue, relative to the general fund dollars spent in green. And when it applies, the additional impact of funds raised through donations sought through utility bill payments in yellow. This provides a snapshot of how other cities provide support to their nonprofits. Pinnacle Prevention also researched best practices in grant-making, and analyzed the practices of four cities in the metro area to compare as benchmarks. These four cities, Chandler, Gilbert, Glendale, and Scottsdale, were chosen because of their similar demographics to Goodyear. With our online application and simplified reporting requirements, all of which we are subject to continuous improvement, based on applicant feedback and experience, we check the last three boxes. Three best practices that council might consider are multi-year investments, blend-people-and-place-based strategies, and forming an independent community advisory board. The first two recommended best practices, where we have an opportunity to improve, are to implement a five-year investment cycle, allowing for annual renewals. Blending people and place-based strategies would establish priorities for grant funding to report, to reward proposals demonstrating both a physical or place-based impact, say that 20 times fast, and a people-based impact. For example, there might be a request for a park improvement project, to install new play equipment, and a campaign to emphasize and encourage play and physical activity for all ages. This alignment is very intentional, and ties together towards a clear and specific goal of increased physical activity. So that's an example of blend-people-and-place-based strategies. If we were to incorporate these best practices into our community funding program, council could select three to five clear priority areas to be targeted through grant-making over the course of the five years. In the application, organizations could be asked to provide both short and long-term potential outcomes for reporting measurements. Knowing that they have the potential for a multi-year investment, gives room for grantees to work towards these outcomes in a strategic and focused manner. The final recommendation would be to consider a community advisory board that would work with the council subcommittee, and strengthen the community council feedback loop. This concludes the overview of best practices. We've had discussion around the community assessment, and received feedback from the council. So where we're at now is we'd like to ask the council for their thoughts considering the best practices, if there's guidance for staff to consider, or explore anything that we don't currently do. And in addition to that, our current ongoing funding level for community funding program is $114,400. We did increase it this year with one-time funding, to bring it to $130,000. Is council good at the $114,400? Or is there a consideration to change that? But I just want to thank you for your time, and your involvement in this, and the conversation. And I'm going to turn it back over to council for any comments concerning best practices or funding options.
Thank you very much. Yes, Sherri, you have one more?
I, I have a question. Our businesses in Glendale, and every month on our utility bill, our water and sewer bill, and it wasn't listed here, they, they, they just kind of add in $2. They don't ask, which I don't like that, first of all. I like to be asked, like, "I'll add to my APS," or my, so I just don't like it added. But how much money is brought in with, with these voluntary contributions to add to the fund?
So, the city of Glendale's From the Heart program that raises the money on the utility bill is an external program to the city. They collect the funds on behalf of a separate entity that distributes them. I don't have a specific number of what Glendale collected for them, because I was looking at grants that were distributed by cities.
See, and I didn't know that, because it doesn't tell you it's for, it makes it sound like it's for the city of Glendale, hence why I don't like how that's done. But I do like it how APS and Southwest Gas do it. They have like a share line, that if you want to add, you can add like $30, or $2, or a dollar. And I, I don't know if that's something to explore on our bills, or donation.
We did have a program like that back when I first started. We were looking into it. It was called PayShare, and it was officially discontinued in 2015. It had been in existence for, four or five years, started around 2010, and had collected $364 from three donors. I don't know how it was implemented, because I wasn't here, I don't know how it was advertised.
Was that the utilities? That's what we did, yes.
And at the time, it was no longer showing up on the utility bill. It was only on the website that you could do it. And that link was not active when we were looking into it. So, we discontinued the program. I think we looked into it back then, too, or I, I looked into it, and at the time, our assessment was that if we had a minimum of 50,000 households in Goodyear, it might be worthwhile looking to do something again, contemplating a low 3% participation rate, and accounting for administrative costs.
Okay. And then my other thought was, I, I like having it more than a year. I don't know if I feel comfortable with five years, because the way the economy right now, with everything going on, it's, woo, you know, it's like a roller coaster. So maybe somewhere in between that. And same thing, I'm okay with 130, maybe making that the benchmark. But with the flexibility, I don't want to bind ourselves, because we don't want to not have money to cover if something goes really awry in the next couple of years. So, I would like to have the flexibility, but I think more than one year, you know, then the, the people that get the grants, if it's a multi-year grant, maybe they can plan better. I don't know. The people on the committee probably have a better thought process on that than I do. I was just putting that out there. So, but thank you.
If we stay with, if we stay with $114,000, I'm not too concerned if it's four years, three years, four years, with a budget that's $700 million, as far as if there's a downturn. The one thing, though, I don't feel real comfortable with, or not sure whether we need it, is that last one, independent. I don't think we need another advisory board, to be honest with you. I think we go through it quite well. I think the key, though, is to focus in, on what will be the strategies that we attack. And if we can come to a consensus on that, and you pick three, or four, or five areas, or whatever the case may be, and you have X amount of dollars, and you look at what's at the long-term bang for the buck, so to speak, I think it makes much easier to figure out how to allocate those funds. As opposed to peanut buttering, you know, 20, 30, 40 organizations, you focus on some key ones, so you can get more done with the dollars that you have, so to speak. So that's kind of what I was trying to get to, as we get through this committee. We haven't quite gotten there yet, but I could see the long term. But I, I really don't see any value in another advisory board on top of what we have.
Wally, did you have another comment?
I'm going to choose last. Thank you. Well, I'm surprised with this, but I do have some questions. I'd like to ask Doug, the $114,400, what percentage of our budget is that? I knew it. Grab your calculator.
Oh, you got a challenge.
Operating budget, what number do you want?
Your operating budget.
Our, our general fund budget is around $100 million.
What's the percentage?
0.01%.
0.01%.
Little over 1%.
Okay. We give the arts community 1% of all construction sales tax, do we not?
I'm going to have staff answer that, please. Not from the DIAs, but staff.
What do we give the arts commission?
The arts commission gets up to 1% of construction sales tax. It has never gotten that much, and I think Christina would know approximately.
So, how, how do we, how do we give it to them? Do we give it to them in $50,000 increments, $100,000 increments? How does that work?
We give, we give an allocation in the budget process to the arts commission, and then the arts commission brings to the council an arts plan.
Okay. And their plan is never $114,000, is it?
It's.
It just varies.
It varies, correct.
It varies, okay. I really like what we do, because we give to many organizations, and you have to remember, every one of these organizations, except the little mom and pop ones that are just starting up, we are not the only people that give to them. They do not plan their entire budget on what the city of Goodyear gives them. They ask for $5,000. The minimum they'd like to have is 2,500. If they get 2,000, then they know they just need to get additional monies from other places. I don't know of one organization that is really, that really operates with the magnitude of All Faith, Southwest Lending Closet, St. Mary's Food Bank, Boys Club, Girls Club, all of those, we are not their funder. We, we help, but we're not their funder. And remember, we out, we have a, a contract with our boys, I mean, the YMCA, that's roughly $250,000 a year. So, there you go. I, I wish we could do more than $114,000, but I like the grant process that we do. I think the committee really works hard to give the money to the 501(c)(3)'s that really provide the most service to our city, because we're not really partial. I mean, we really look at their needs, and what they are going to do with the money. I think if we say, well, we'll only do, I'm going to say, you know, if you want to do an issue, you know, how, how do you, how do you put St. Mary's Food Bank and Southwest Lending Closet in the same category? And Southwest Lending Closet is the only one that we, we do fund, that does what they do, because it's such a unique service. So.
Well, what I was talking about, it's not just one. You could have three or four major categories, that are providing either medical equipment, which they do, okay? Or substances, which is food, or some type of health or school programs. I mean, you can get three to four, three to five programs, really easy, in three or five different areas, that are not related. I just gave you some examples of this.
You're right. And if you look at the ones we've really been going to, we haven't given to anybody far out, you know, we, we kind of do that. So, I, I'm really, personally, I'm, I don't want us to have an advisory board. I think the council that it's appointed to do it is perfectly capable of doing it, and can do it, and should do it. Because truthfully, we know the community, we really do. We're involved in them. Every one of us are on a nonprofit board somewhere. And I would like to, if possible, increase it, and if not, I don't want to go any lower than $114,000. How much does Chandler give? And how much does Gilbert give? And Glendale and Scottsdale? What is their, how much do they give in their grants? If you're going to compare them, you gotta, we gotta have a figure, so.
Yeah. It was difficult to do, for sure, apples to apples. So what I tried to do was call only on the grants that are given directly to nonprofits, not the CDBG and Home and all.
Yeah, that doesn't count.
Right, exactly. So, Avondale has $100,000 out of their general fund. Buckeye had $46,010. Chandler gives 1.149, $1,149,161 to nonprofits from their general fund.
You have Gilbert there? Do you have Gilbert?
Gilbert does $430,000. And the way they do it, they also have multiple ways they try to raise the money. They have like a Gilbert swag shop, and they sell ads in their utility bill, and they collect donations through the utilities. Whatever they raise from that offsets the 430. It's not added to it. It's generally not enough to make a big dent, but it's starting.
Is that a good model for, you know, I always compare Gilbert and Goodyear, and some of their, their movement of the city, so just, you don't have to answer that tonight, but I would like to have a little information.
And then ours, $114,000. Mesa, $720,000. Peoria, $243,500. Scottsdale, $200,000. And surprise, $100,000.
How much is Glendale?
Glendale doesn't give any from their general fund.
Yeah, we really, yeah.
They have the art tax.
We can't compare ourselves money-wise to any of these, because they have extraordinary amount of money that they're giving to nonprofits, and we're, we're a little drop in the bucket. I mean, and, and I'm happy we can do what we do. Gosh, I, I, I think we're doing fine the way we are. That's, I'm, I'm done here.
Yeah, Bill?
You know, I was, I said to Christine before we started, I'm not going to say anything. Yeah. And she's like, "No, no, you have to say something." So I, you know, I, I was always opposed to increasing this, just, just to increase it. I think the survey results tell us the story that we thought we knew, which was, there's not, while there's need, it, the need isn't, is not as excessive as we perhaps once thought it was. But I also do, I'm not suggesting that we decrease the amount. If that amount stays at, at 114, or 115, or 130, I'm good in either direction on that. I do like the idea, and if I can steal council member Pizzillo's comments, on page 11 in the booklet, is the, is the wheel, the community wheel. And there are some key components of that wheel that drive toward the things that are important for us as a community. And, and we're talking about, that last slide talked about focused areas, or, I hate to make you race through like 40 slides, but, no, keep all the way to the end, the one that you left us off at. The recommend, recommendation page. Yeah, that one. The blend-the-people-and-place-based strategies, using this as our guide for the strategies, but picking the ones that we're going to use. You know, we talked a lot about, about mental health, and the community has said, there's not a lot of mental health places for us. So if there's a mental health agency that has come forward and asked, that's where, you know, we, we need to stay focused, and pick those areas of focus. Sure, so, that's what I'm saying. So we, we identify what those are, and say, these are the, these are the areas that we're going to push into. And, and we've had some great, I think, Wally, you used the term mom and pop kinds of places. But there are some things that we have donated to in the past, that perhaps aren't as strong in this wheel, as there are other ones, that may, may stand up a little bit taller. So, I'm in support of that kind of strategy. And I like the idea of a multi-year. I think it makes it easier for the nonprofit, it makes it easier on the staff, and it makes it easier on the subcommittee. I would probably suggest a two-year cycle, that we don't do anything where we're, where we're committing ourselves so far out, but yet we're able to actually manage, you know, some of the, some of the stuff. And a two-year cycle is pretty, pretty simple to manage, even from the city's perspective. I'm sure we can find a, in a drastic downturn, I'm sure we can find $115,000 to, to make our commitment. And as far as the, the citizen advisory board, I wouldn't suggest we, we go to that until our funding levels start to go way up, in the 200, 300, 400,000. Then maybe... Then maybe, maybe we need to... I don't know that I want to see us giving a million dollars of taxpayer money into, into programs. But, but in any case, I like the suggestions. I think where we're at, I agree with Wally. What we're doing now is working. If we just bring some, some focus to it with the wheel, we're headed in the right direction. I am curious about two things. First was, we've talked, we talk a lot about the $115,000. But really, at some point, getting, maybe in the manager's memo or something, what is the total amount of direct contributions that we give to, like, all the nonprofits? What are we giving to Avondale? What do we give to, to, I mean, we all know YMCA, but any one of those other ones? Can we get like a grand total of what that is that includes the 115 and that? Because I think that might tell us some...
I think so, too.
We might be a little closer to a million dollars than, than I think. But I think we'll, we'll feel better just have a better understanding. And then the, the other follow-up that I did a double take on, that you kicked this whole thing off with when that was something about a Mavericks sponsorship? I didn't see that in the slide deck, so I'm curious what that was. And is that part of the 130 or is that addition to the 130?
That's an additional request that will be in this year's budget for fiscal year '21. It's an additional request.
Got it, okay.
Kind of giving you a heads up.
So, we'll talk about that in April.
The Mavericks organization that does, the nonprofit that provides funding for many nonprofit organizations, and they hold the annual food truck roundup at the ballpark. They just did the shindig at the airport this weekend. It will be a consideration for you, something for you to consider in next year's budget. As a sponsorship, next year's budget.
Okay, let's go on. Lori, you had a question?
I just want to comment on, on the discussion. I, I do serve on that committee, and I am in favor of a multi-year investment. I think it will help our nonprofits' plan. And we don't just give money away. We, we support them so they can support our people, and I think that, that's important to note. Interesting conversation about comparing it to what we fund the arts. And I would dare say they're getting more funding. And so, I think that's something that maybe we should establish some kind of benchmarks as we grow, our population grows, the need grows. What will, what's, what's good funding to meet our community's needs? I'm probably the only one to say I think that there is value in a citizen committee. We involve our citizens in a lot of conversations and how policymaking at their advisory, I think they, obviously, they have some input, which is reflected here, that we don't fully understand a lot of the nuances, and maybe that would be a forum to provide, to gain further insight. Now, is this needs assessment online? Is it available to the public?
It is. It's available at goodyearaz.gov/communityfunding is the most direct way to get to it.
Wonderful. And then I understand that you're going to cover this at the Faith and Community Roundtable with our partners, our nonprofits and our faith community?
Yes. A lot of the motivation is that our partners can be responding to these priorities. It doesn't have to be just the city.
Okay. I like the idea of tying our grants into the wheel and the things that we established as a priority. But, you know, I just want to comment, even the arts committee, they're weighing in on how the money is spent, and so that's my thought.
Well, yes. Brandon?
Yes, I mean, same thing. I think that the multi-year is a good idea. And then, I don't know, I'm, I guess I'm mixed on the independent community advisory board. I'm not sure. I'm just trying to think what they, what they're going to be doing for us, or make sure they're put to good use. So, they'd be implementing this policy and looking for other options that we can do to make sure we're, I guess we're, that we're meeting the community's needs, I would imagine. So, I guess I'm not fully against it, but I'm not sure if I'm fully for it. Sorry, that's just a side comment. And then the $130,000, I'm okay with that as well. If we want an ongoing or if we wanted to continue as one time, I'm not sure everybody else is with that or not. But I would like it to be up to the 130 level on a continuing basis, and then maybe year to year, we look at if we want to add one-time dollars on top of that. But, yeah, that's my, that's my side, my comments.
Any other? I'm going to go ahead and just, some, 6:10. We'll have a 10-minute break between this time, okay? But before we go, I have just one more comment. So, the committee you put together, the one thing I've admired about Goodyear, and this is before I got on the council, is that they choose a committee and they educate them. So, if they're coming with their own opinions, and this is, you know, or they've got something that they're going to make sure happens, I find that negates that. And so, I would want to make sure that all the departments, so basically, they're going to go with like a government class. They're going to know how a city's run. I think they'll find a lot of surprises, and they'll see how difficult this is to take taxpayers' money and support all of these. Because we do have taxpayers that do not like this, okay? They think they're, they work hard for their money, and they don't want to pay their taxes, and they don't want it spent that way. So, we need to really, so that we don't get caught up in that controversy. We want to make sure that we have a variety on that, and that's the big thing. So, it doesn't have to be someone with a high, you know, tech job, somebody that's just a normal citizen making a normal hourly wage, and we make a choice of, of different citizens. Yes, City Manager Gavin.
Mayor, I just wanted to clarify. I believe that what I heard from the consensus of council would be not to move forward with a citizens committee. So, I just wanted to make sure that, that we're clear, that it looked like a multi-year strategy is something that we're open to, perhaps two years. Everyone seems to like the vitalist wheel to perhaps give some direction on prioritization, but that we would not be moving forward with a citizens committee. So, I just wanted to clarify that point.
Everybody?
So, are we to give the focus rather than the wheel? I mean, because it would be up to, someone else would be picking the wheel parts.
What I think perhaps would be for consideration is if the council subcommittee was to meet before the process kicked off.
Well, that'd be a good idea.
So that the council subcommittee could look at the wheel, determine priorities, confirm whether it's a two-year cycle or what the subcommittee was comfortable with. And then when the request goes out for submissions, that's all considered as part of that program.
Okay. I would like to say if we're going to do two-year funding, we still have a, have to have a mechanism in place after one year, they report back to us. Because if they're not doing what we think they are doing, I am not in favor of funding them further, or if I find out they have gotten $2 million from some other place, that our money could go elsewhere. I don't want them to think it's a blanket two-year funding.
Agreed.
And I don't think that's fair. I don't, I am on, every nonprofit board I sit on, none of us, absolutely none of us, even Hope Services, which has a huge budget. We do not ever get two-year funding grants. We have to apply every single year to justify why we want it. And we're building a children's home and aquarium system for these kids, and it's multi-multi-million dollars. So, I think you're very generous, Bill, and it's wonderful. They just don't do it very often. The two-year, you know, the renewal.
The two-year is mostly for our convenience?
Yeah, yeah.
If you add the staff time and give it a dollar amount, there's a lot more money that goes into, into this than $115. So, there may be an advantage from the staff perspective for us to, to make it a two-year cycle. But I love your idea of it's a two-year, it's a one-year automatic renewal if you meet this criteria, therefore you don't, and I think the staff will figure out what, what that looks like. But I wasn't suggesting a blanket. I think there's a lot of stopgaps in between.
Great. Conversation finished? All right, I'm going to adjourn this meeting, and we will, 10 minutes, we will start the regular meeting. This meeting is adjourned.